1.4 Testimonial of the presenters. Please be advised if you are here to present today that you were under oath before the Commissioners' Court. 1.5 Public comments. 1.6, you have a, go ahead Commissioner.
Judge, I would like to thank Mr. James Gonzalez, the foreenperson. We called him out to a public road and he was there. And then about, uh, about last eight, we had supposed to lock him, unless they got a pool from the board. And, uh, we, we cut, uh, law. The gentleman called me the following day and he was gonna lock it again. I advised Mr. James, Mr.
Gonzalez.
And, uh, if he doesn't again, I'm gonna just take, uh, let the fourth be over. I'm just gonna take a public road and knock it down. Because that's a public road and they came, luckily it was out of pool from the board.
1.6 Approval of minutes, September 9, 2024.
Judge, if I can call Commissioners' Attention to Page 2 of 3?
One second, Mr. Garcia. Commissioner, what road did you say for the?
We'd call it Wagner Road, but it's, uh, 160, I believe, or what? Okay, to the correct number, I think.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Garcia, sorry.
Yes, there's a typo on page 2 of 3. Uh, and the last item revisited, the agenda items 2.3 and 2.4, the, uh, 1, 2, 3, but the case sentence, that, uh, $36,000 new vehicle is for precinct 4. Should read precinct 4, not precinct 3.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the constable, correct? Yes.
Yes. You have a motion, Commissioner Aloto? Motion by Commissioner Aloto Carmona, is there a second? A motion for approval of minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1 Remembering the late honorable Judge Rodrigo Rodriguez. We do have a certificate of honor and appreciation to present to the family of Rodrigo Guerra. Um, I don't see the family here right now. I know that they advised that they would be here. Um, I'll hold on to it nonetheless. Um, just for the record, wanted to take a moment, if we could, uh, silence so that we could honor and in memory of, uh, the former County Judge Rodrigo Guerra. So at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence. I will sign this certificate of honor and appreciation presented to the family of Rodrigo Guerra, former Dimmitt County Judge, for his dedicated services as County Judge, as he served three consecutive terms and was the first Hispanic Dimmitt County Judge to take office here in Dimmitt County. 2.2 Accept the donation of two totes of foam from the Dilly Fire Department. 2.3 Accepting, accepting the donation of mill from Anderson Columbia Co. Incorporated.
That should be Millings, Judge.
Tell me again, Commissioner?
Millings, instead of mill, should be Millings.
Millings?
Correct.
M-I-L-L-I-N-G?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Garcia, let the record reflect that notation has accept donation from Millings, from Anderson Columbia Co. 2.4 Accept the donation of sand for the golf course from Black Mountain Sand. And 2.5 Is it accept of donation of, is it eight 35-foot electrical poles from North Star? Thank you. Again, uh, at this time, the Court would like to thank all the individuals and all the organizations and agencies that donated such items as mentioned by the record to the county of Dimmitt. 3.1 Approval of bonds?
No action.
We have no bonds, no action. 3.2 Discussion and appropriate action, approval of preliminary replat of 20 acres of property in Dimmitt County on FM 2688 Winter Garden Real Estate LLC. Do we have any representatives here?
Hi there, um, my name is Hymena Lugo and I'm representing Spearman today on...
Hymena, what was your last name?
Lugo, L-U-G-O.
Thank you.
I'm representing Spearman Energy, a green merchant energy trading company that's developed, owns and operates battery, battery energy storage systems. Um, hoping to discuss today the approval of the preliminary replat of the 20 acres on Dimmitt County, about two miles south on FM 2688. Uh, Winter Garden Real Estate is hoping to replat these 20 acres to purchase to, uh, move our project forward.
Good morning, my name is Melissa Van Crum, V-A-N-C-R-U-M. I'm also here on behalf of Spearman Energy and requested a replat. We've submitted an application for a preliminary replat and we've discussed with the County Attorney and Commissioner Uranda a little bit on what our plans are here. And we're just asking for, since it's platted land, we're asking for a replat to divide off that 20 acres in order to purchase it so it's reflected in the records of the plat. Uh, but we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And is property to have a vehicle allotment?
The, the purpose of the replat, um, is to purchase the property, uh, but the intent is for it to be developed for use that's, uh, similar to the adjacent uses. There's a substation, uh, to the northwest and there is a battery energy storage that's essentially...
Did you tell me about this auto site?
I'm sorry?
Is it kind of like this auto site?
No, it's, uh, they're basically batteries that store...
Oh, okay.
To help stabilize the grid. Um, so it's a, it's a facility that helps with energy stabilization.
So, so battery, uh, it's gonna be a, their intent is to use the property for a battery station to store it? It's gonna be for what? A battery storage?
I can, I can explain a little further. Uh, Spearman Energy is a, is a company that develops, owns and operates battery, battery energy storage systems. There's currently, um, near, uh, adjacent to that substation, there's already a 10-megawatt battery project and we hope to develop the 20 acres if we're able to replat and purchase those 20 acres to develop, um, a similar project.
Commissioner, who was that one of yours?
Neither one of them.
There's one, there's an existing one of, of, uh, named for the substation.
Say that, say that again, Commissioner Uranda.
There's an existing battery, uh, station. As you leave, uh, cutting towards 186, before you get to our yard on the left-hand side, there's an existing station already there and there's probably another one in the open area above that Edward. I haven't gone to that one, but you said they were pretty much all over.
Ma'am, I'm gonna ask with all due respect to notify also the Commissioner in that area because it kind of blindsides anybody there. So the courtesy would be also to notify the Commissioner that's in charge of that area because here she might have questions and when you address it up here, we're in the blind. It's not just one Commissioner. The Commissioner belongs to that area.
Okay, no problem. We can work with Melissa, who's our counsel with First Spearman Energy, um, to notify the Commissioner as well. Um, we, we will hope to, um, you know, develop the project later on, but the first stage for us is making sure that we can purchase the 20 acres, which is the purpose of the replat. Absolutely will make sure to, you know, cross all our Ts and dotted our Is and do all diligence to develop the project.
Just for the record, the reason I got involved in this because of the utility department.
Well, I understand, Commissioner, but it also is not a precinct. It should be notified also.
Well, I mean...
Uh, there's no...
Okay, we're not gonna argue, but...
No, no, I mean...
I know, but you're just saying, well, he's still trying to talk. Um, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna recommend that, uh, we're gonna table this item and I'm going to, um, get with our legal counsel to make sure that all the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed, as the Commissioner mentioned, and also get Commissioner to look up on board because this is a precinct.
If I could clarify your point.
Go ahead.
Uh, we've been in contact with the County Attorney, um...
And I understand that, ma'am, that you've been in contact with the County Attorney. However, the County Attorney, has the County Attorney advised you anything? The County Attorney hasn't advised anybody on this court.
I, I know he's reached out to Commissioner, uh, Uranda.
Well, he might have reached out to Commissioner Uranda, but unfortunately, no one else is aware of what the issue or the concerns are. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, um, motion to table it and I'm going to request for our legal counsel, who is not our County Attorney, um, to follow up and review and then put you guys on the next Commissioners' Court meeting.
Okay, I, I would ask to make sure that that happens because we were, um, requesting to be on the September 3rd agenda previously and it was left off the September 3rd agenda for the County Attorney to review and that apparently hasn't happened.
And the County Attorney, again, as I advised you, did not notify the Court, one, to have it on the agenda, and two, hadn't advised anyone to that effect.
Well, we had submitted the request to your office to be on the agenda and it's...
And it was not on the agenda, ma'am.
But that was from September 3rd.
And I understand, I'm telling you, it's not on the agenda. And so I'm gonna talk to our attorney and we'll put it on the next agenda.
Correct.
If it fits in the agenda.
Okay. And for reference, this is a preliminary plat, there will be a final plat before it is finalized. So there, this is where your conditions are suggested. And I apologize for not reaching out, um, to the Commissioner, but, um, the reason is this is very early, this is just in order to determine if the land can be purchased. That's the only purpose of what we're having for you today, is to be able to efficiently divide that property. So before development happens, before anything would be rolling into town on construction trucks or anything like that, we understand and we respect and would absolutely coordinate and will be in contact as far as all of those items as well. So, thank you for your time and, uh, we will look for the next agenda.
Thank you. Motion to table it?
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Thank you.
I have a second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? 3.3 Discussion and appropriate action, approval of 2024-2025 property and casualty insurance.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning, Mr. Proustky.
Good morning, Ms. Proustky. My name is Frank Proustky with the Laverneia Insurance Agency. What I presented to y'all is a copy of the renewal. Uh, I would like to go over some of it. The property has a new value from $58,610,000 to $65,171,000. That is the nutrition building and we added a building in Comado, the community building.
Open word, Mr. Proustky?
Pardon?
You said you add...
I'm sorry, it was an asterisk. I apologize if I made the mistake again.
I was gonna say, give models over in every county.
I apologize, you're correct, Judge, I am wrong. Uh, also, the contents went up a little bit because we added contents to the nutrition building and some in the activity building. Inland marine values went up approximately $1.3 million. Last year was $6.5, this year it's $8 million. Automobile, we went from 215 autos to 239 autos. No deductibles have changed. Uh, you still have a $10,000 deductible on wind and hail, which is very uncommon in today's world. Uh, the, I'm prepared to take any questions at this time.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Uranda.
Mr. Proustky, the two lawsuits that we're encountering right now, are they gonna affect our insurance rates?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
He's saying that two lawsuits that we're currently under are, those are affecting our premium rates.
I know one is okay, I feel very comfortable with it. Uh, the other, I am thinking it will not be a substantial matter if, uh, I'm gonna not go into those because there's a lot of HIPAA things going on with that. But I don't think it's gonna be a, unless it's a million-dollar claim on both of them, I would say, yes, we're gonna have issues. But I do not see those being, those types of situations.
And just for clarification, Commissioner Uranda, when you're saying lawsuits, you mean vehicle lawsuits? Okay, just wanna clarify, now that you're talking about personnel. So for the record, there's been an increase in the premiums in the amount of $118,334.13 from last year. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Duucava.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion in regards to the premiums? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Proustky.
Thank you.
3.4 Discussion and appropriate action, approval for reimbursement for extension agent Alyssa Cruz for attending the 2024 TCA State Conference on August 1st in College Station.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Questions of Ms. Cruz?
Ma'am?
Go ahead.
Judge, I thought we had agreed not to bring this afternoon more on reimbursement that, uh, everything should have been in order, they have plenty of time to submit everything. So, you know, we make policies and then we break them again, so we'd like to know.
In regards to the reimbursement, Ms. Cruz, um, the question on the table is, obviously this was done on August 1st or the 2nd, why are we not bringing it to the...
I, I wasn't aware that there was a registration until a week before the trip and I had already requested my deals and everything on a different agenda item that got approved. Um, so I went ahead and attended, but I paid out of pocket. Um, I registered late, so they didn't charge me a late fee, but I went ahead and paid that on my own. I missed the email that included the registration form.
Go ahead, sir.
Ms. Cruz, on, uh, on Sabanti's trainings, does the hybrid like to care?
For this one, no. Uh, but they do cover some, yes.
Other questions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Uranda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duucava. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
We have one, we have, did you, you voted for, right, Commissioner, better?
I don't know. I'll get you.
I'm too short.
I don't know if you can hear me or not.
You threw me off.
I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Um, we have four yeas and one na, uh, an opposition by Commissioner Juan Carmona. And just for future reference, Ms. Cruz, if you can, make sure that you submit your travel requests before you do the travel.
Yeah.
Thank you. 3.5 Discussion and appropriate action, approval for extension agent Alyssa Cruz for to attend the 2024 District 12 Fall Faculty Conference on September 24th through the 26th in West Lico. I have a motion by Commissioner Duucava and a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cruz. 3.6 Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP Precinct 4, Mr. Alfredo Martinez for the month of August 2024.
Good morning, Your Honor, Commissioners.
Are there any questions from the Court in regards to Mr. JP Martinez's report?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Duucava. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioner.
3.7 Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP Precinct 3, Ms. Letizia Hernandez for the month of August 2024. Judge, I have a quick question for you. Um, on one of your reports, the number of cases filed by agency or officer, and then it has agency and it says Dimmitt County Sheriff, and there's five citations, I believe, but they say unknown. What does that mean?
Unknown.
Yes, ma'am. It, it has, it's on the second page of your report. Number of cases filed by agency slash officer, and then it says agency Dimmitt County Sheriff, and it has the names of the deputies, and at the bottom, it says unknown and that person gave up five citations.
I don't know, the only thing I can think of is there were those old, old tickets that came in and we don't know who paid the tickets because what we transferred from, um, what was it? Um, yeah, wait, I can't, that's the only thing I have.
Judge, I can answer that.
Yes, ma'am.
It means that the officer that issued those citations is not in the system at the moment and, uh, we need to send that information to be updated with the turnover, turnover, uh, employees at the sheriff's office when a new deputy comes in and has to suddenly get names and send them to Intech to enter so that they can have their badge number and their name, so that's why it shows unknown. So that officer is not gonna put it in the system.
Any other questions? There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Some motion.
Motion by Commissioner Duucava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, Judge. 3.8 Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP Precinct 2, Mr. Alberto Esquivel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Questions of Judge Esquivel?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
3.9 Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP Precinct 1, Ms. Sonia Guerrero Betis for the month of August 2024.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Are there any questions of Judge Betis?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Um, Judge, Commissioners, I don't know if Mr. Ferreira has spoken to y'all, but it's imperative that we change our server. It was supposed to be changed in 2019 when, um, Chris was here and it hasn't been done. And our software is in great risk of being attacked. Our firewall services are low, uh, we could shut down at any time. Uh, it was supposed to be changed in 2019 and it hasn't been done. And I'm, I fear for our offices if it does...
Do you know why it wasn't changed in 2019?
Chris just never did, just like he never did for video magistrations and, and I've brought it up many times, I know that most of y'all can remember that I would freak it out very often about the video magistrations. I was unaware of the server, uh, issue until Mr. Ferreira brought it up to my attention and I received a letter, um, with the information from John from Intech of the severity of where we're at at this time. I know that he has mentioned it before, even to Mr. Ferreira, but, and when Chris was here and it hadn't been changed. I don't know if it's brought up to our new IT, I don't think it has, so I think it would have already been changed, but at this point in time, it's imperative that we, we take action.
Thank you, Judge. 3.10 Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from District Court, Ms. Maricela Gonzalez for the month of August 2024. Ms. Gonzalez, do you have a report?
I do.
I do. Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez, on the first, second page, or the first page after the cover letter on technology, it's the printout, is, is it $5? What is that amount? Are the first civil distributions?
Yes.
And the state consolidated fee is $2,890?
Twenty-eight ninety-two.
I'm asking Ms. Gonzalez, because mine, that printout, it's blank.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We're having problems with the machine upstairs.
And the appellate judicial system fund?
One hundred.
$100? Thank you, ma'am. I got it, Commissioner. I got it fixed. Thank you, though. Questions of Com, of Ms. Gonzalez?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Judge, I did want to briefly just thank the Treasurer's Office for advising me that the OLS grant had ended August 31st. Um, I didn't need to make necessary, uh, legal changes for my OLS clerk. Um, I was not aware that the OLS grant had ended. Um, so I just wanted to thank the Treasurer's Office for that.
Thank you. 3.11 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from County Clerk, Mr. Mario Garcia, for the month of August 2024.
Judge and Commissioner, pretty average month, and of course, looming over our heads the election coming up, so we will be having some minor changes as far as polling places. But it will be public for five, probably.
Any questions on Mr. Garcia?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner DeLuca and a second by Commissioner Uranda. Further discussion? I do want to advise the court so that they are aware and our community that, um, we had, thanks to Mr. Gonzalez and in defense, we, um, did our, one of our first jury trials in Dimmitt County in some time, and, um, I know a lot of people reached out from the jury pool that they were very, um, excited to be able to participate, and even though we had some technical difficulties, um, with that jury trial, um, it was a successful jury trial for Mr. Gonzalez in the county attorney's office, um, but it came to fruition, and I just wanted to advise the court. Um, I think the last time Dimmitt County had a jury trial was, what, like 20 years ago or something like that? It's been years. So, Mr. Gonzalez is ready to go, and we have another.
Been less than that.
We have another jury trial coming up, so just wanted to advise the court, um, that you are more than welcome to attend these jury trials if you want to see your county attorney in action.
And if you want to serve, it's even better.
Thank you.
Now, I think it's been less than 20 years, right?
Nineteen.
All right, eighteen.
Three point, or all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.12 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Approval for County Clerk, Mr. Mario Garcia, to attend the CDCAT Region 8 Fall Conference on October 2nd through the 4th in Kingsville, Texas. I have a motion by Commissioner DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Yes. 3.13 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Approval of Interlocal Agreement Between the Board of Trustees Curiezo Springs CIST and Dimmitt County Commissioners' Court to Conduct a General Election on November 5, 2024.
Judge and Commissioners, our county attorney has reviewed the contents of the contract and all of its details, as well as the next side of the order calling for the joint election.
And just for clarification purposes, Mr. Garcia, to advise the public that is either watching on YouTube or that is here present today, or for purposes of our local newspaper, there will not be a polling site in Catarina. Is that correct?
That's correct.
If, any residents voter, voters that are registered will have to, um, vote and cast their vote in Asherton, correct? Any other questions? My distinct understanding from the last time we were here was because, one, it was very, they were having a hard time finding a poll attending to service the Catarina area and given to the, a, a judge to, um, preside over the Catarina location, and two, given the number of registered voters and voters that were coming out to vote in Catarina, um, it was not conducive financially either to have it, um, but I, I think for future reference, for the sake of the constituents in Catarina, if there is an individual that would like to preside as a judge, um, in taking those courses, another thing that we have to keep in mind that I think was brought to our attention was that, um, the diocese of, of the Catholic Church made it a little bit more difficult for county government to utilize the church hall in Catarina for purposes of, um, voting, so we'd have to find a different location in Catarina to be able to, um, allow the residents to cast the votes. I think at that time last year, we tried to do, um, we worked with, um, Mr. Garcia to try to find ways to find a location so that we could not, um, inconvenience the constituents of Catarina and the ranchers that live out in Catarina, but it was very difficult because historically speaking, it's always been held at the church hall, and, and this time around, they weren't really allowing us to use it anymore. Is that correct, Mr. Cruz? So if you know a location and somebody that wants to preside as a judge, maybe that's something that we can talk about again and have conversations, but.
Because it's very hard for people to travel, just to come over and, and say, nah, I'm not going to go vote. I'm going to spin my gears and then they won't give a vote. So, and for the future, I think, uh, vote by 16 doesn't run around $3,000 if we build it ourselves and have an air condition and everything. I mean, we've got property in Bigwell, so I don't.
Catarina.
Catarina, I mean, I'm sorry, in Catarina, and we can, I mean, it's very easy to build a small building and, and provide every AC unit and everything else, so. I'm, I'm not the commissioner. I'm just trying my, trying my suggestions, because it's very easy to accommodate those people, and it's very hard to, uh, for them to travel over the, the route.
Judge, that's, I may add, uh, that's a very good project, uh, as long as ADA compliant as well. Uh, also, uh, election code requires every precinct, election precinct must have at least 100 registered voters, and I believe Catarina is down to seventy-seven.
It was 74, I think, last time, Ms. Mary, right? Seventy-six. It was 76 voters.
The ADA requires for them just to go in there and vote and have a, a place, and it's, uh, very hard to build a ramp to where they can put, uh, uh, wheelchair in there and restrooms, uh, handicap combs or so, bars or so, so I, I don't, I don't foresee a problem building something there unless, you know.
That's not a problem. The problem is the registered voters, but the state has to do a group to hold the election.
Boy, it's not, it's not mandated. We can have it there, but if, if there was over 100 registered voters, then we have to have it there, but because there's not 100 registered voters, the law allows us to host the polling place somewhere else, which in our case is Asherton, and the reason for that, uh, was again, because we were having a hard time finding a presiding judge, a presiding judge that used to preside there, unfortunately passed away. He's, he's no longer with us, one. Two, um, like I said, historically speaking, we would hold or host the elections at the church. However, with the new administration in the church, they have not allowed the county or anybody to, um, utilize that for any kind of business, for any kind of county business to with the elections. So I think that your idea of putting up a, a vote by whatever you said, I think it's a great idea. I think it's good because, I mean, I'm sure Commissioner DeLuca knows very well that her constituents would appreciate not having to drive to Asherton to cast their votes, um, which I think is a great idea, but I think that we need to, uh, make sure that we have all our ducks in order to include talks about building something there, one. Two, making sure that we have ascertained that there is a voting, uh, judge, presiding judge, because if we can't even get a judge, then there's no point of building anything. But I think it's a good discussion to have. So can I get a motion? Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.15 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from Dimmitt County Assistant Fire Chief, Mr. David Torres, for the month of August 2024. Mr. Torres, do you have a, a report?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Torres.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. As you can see, for the month of August, we've had a pool of twelve calls and one burn management citation issued. Some of the, uh, severe fires that we did have was going to be the, uh, strip fires, also the mutual aids that we did with the city of Curiezo and the city of Asherton as well. And then we did have one MBA with a fatality, uh, there on Highway 85 on FM, west of FM 198.
Any questions of the fire department report? There are no questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner DeLuca. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Torres. 3.16 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from Victory Ambulance for the month of August 2024.
Good morning, everyone.
We have no report.
We emailed with the first, with the first Commissioner's court.
What do you mean, the first Commissioner's court?
With, uh, when the day of first, uh, day of first Commissioner's court was out, we emailed that, that they.
I don't have a report. Where is it? 3.150, you have to get out of here. I see it. You have it, Commissioner? You have to get out of the thing.
I'm not voting, that's beautiful.
Thank you.
I feel wet for her paper.
I feel wet behind. I gotta start reading my tablet, not paper.
You're a charger, right, T?
And I'm doing a good job of it next to my bed.
They make it look good.
Yes, ma'am.
You got it, Commissioner Alonso?
Okay, so for that month, we had a total of 245 runs. We had 57 medical emergencies, uh, 43 refusals, 52 tractors, 15 health plans, 20 discharges, eight dialysis, six doctors' appointments, 14 wound cares, 27 MBAs, and three dealers.
Questions on Mr. Arribas?
I have a question, Judge.
Go ahead, Mr. Uranda.
Just so you guys, on this, on a report like this, for example, is there any way of us being able to, how many of these ones were actually from the city limits, and how many were not?
Uh, we can, we can probably start separating them.
We just separated them.
Mister, uh, I, we probably can. I did, I did one for, uh, for last year, but, uh, I went and separated the individual, but I can start getting, see if the girls can separate them.
To separate them, Commissioner, remember to separate them, like what, how many are within the city limits here, Asherton, Bigwell's, Catarina?
What's the percentage of the majority of the calls that he made? Are they within the city or outside city limits?
Um, I haven't done the tally for this year, but in 2023, where they were the majority were within the city limits.
It was like 80, 89% was within the city of Curiezo Springs, based on the report he gave me. Other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Uranda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeLuca. All, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 3.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from County Commissioners for the month of August 2024. We'll start with Commissioner Jose Uranda.
Judge, in our precinct, we're basically trying to take advantage of the moisture that we receive here recently of the bleeding roads, and of course, given the regular damage to cut more grass, um, and performing some of our restrikt of, of the town.
Questions of Commissioner Uranda? We'll go on to Commissioner Precinct 2, Alonso Carmona.
The same thing with the maintenance of the brush and the brush. The maintenance and the brush, um, we did, we're still working on County Road 1542. As you can see, we carried 32 loads, a million to that road, and as I recall right now, they're probably working on Tokini Lake, where we had a, uh, shipping seal problem, so they're going to try and get it repaired starting today.
Any questions of Commissioner Alonso Carmona? Precinct 3 and 6, Commissioner Juan Carmona? Precinct 3 and 6, Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Judge, I was asked by a landowner, assisting him with the repairs on an entrance to.
You have a report, Comish?
Sorry?
Did you turn in a report?
Yes. Do you have?
I don't have it. I have Commissioner Mallory's. You have it? No?
We don't have it.
It's what? It wasn't signed by you, that's why. Here you go, Commissioner.
Let everybody look after me, I will get after everybody also. I'll, I'll address this issue and we'll be there on time.
Thank you.
And I called Kexad and they told me that it was the county's responsibility to repair those entrances into the benches and all of that.
Yes.
He's gonna buy the pipe and everything else, so we're just gonna assist him in holding it and covering it up. But it's in the future, I told him to, to up at the ex-commissions board and for him to ask for the assistance. The state, state says that LGD, he's the one that told him that all entrances belong to the county now. They're not repairing any entrances.
He had mentioned that prior to, I think, a one-time commissioner. And I remember we had spoken to him about an entrance to a certain road, and he had said that it would fall on the county.
Well, it's under county.
On 277?
It's under county jurisdiction, but I'm not, to be honest with you, I'm not sure if any repairs overseas to the actual property are pertaining to county expenditure or actually to the landlord. That's what I'm sure, but it is under.
Well, on the, on the, not on the actual highway, but like right before you enter into the property?
Yeah, the driveway.
The driveway, right before, that would fall under, according to what, what Mr. Moreno's telling Commissioner Juan is that that's the county?
Yeah, because they don't have no restriction on county road. I mean, they do.
And I think that Mr. Gonzalez is shaking his head, that's why you're saying so, right?
If it's, if it's on a county road, but if it's on a, on a state right of way, then I feel it's the state's obligation to maintain it.
What is this off of, Commissioner? What road is this? It's an 85. And the driveway is off of 85?
Right.
And that should be a, that should be a state driveway? If it's.
Can I borrow a piece of paper?
And. Do you know the rules are established or not?
I think that's a discussion we can have with Text Bell. We can call them and find out, Mr. Carmona.
This is what they're telling me and I.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is evaluate the existing condition. It is on state highway. Typically, it's property owners concerned to take care of that. But I don't know the circumstances of what it is you're discussing. But I can tell you this, with all my other county clubs and city clubs, this is a constant issue about how to manage and issue driveway permanent applications for improvements and how each entity handles it. Sometimes each entity develops their policy. So perhaps from this event, once y'all get through it, you can start narrowing down your policy as it applies to state highways, county roads, private entrances, no entrances that are passing through a driveway. The reason why a county may want to be involved is I've seen a lot of instances where you have different sized pipes. And sometimes you have a bigger pipe that's upstream in the drainage channel than the smaller pipe downstream. Because if it's left up to property owner's choice, they may just have the existing pipe that they want to utilize and they put it in there, it may not be the proper sized pipe. So it would, but even county at some point in time, have a more formalized process that would address driveways on the state maintained roadway systems, driveways on county maintained roadway systems, whether it's a rehabilitation driveway, whether it's a new driveway pipe, there's all those different instances that would apply. Yes, and the type of pipe insurance. So that's also important. When we do an improvement project, for instance, when we design one, if there is a driveway, like Sabres on Diamond H, Trans Road, Fake Trans Road, Henderson, we normally try to go in there and assess the coves and see if they need to be replaced because they're in not a good condition. Because the proper function of a road is when you're on it, is the direct correlation is how low the drainage is managed in the water system. So, long answer, apologize, I hope that adds to clarity.
That's fine, I just wanna get the right answer.
I'll, I'll have an exception, don't get.
They did, that's what they told me, so. I'm going to, they told us.
Any other questions of Commissioner Juan Carmona, Precinct 3 and 6? We'll move on to Commissioners Precincts 4, 5, and 7, Commissioner Valerie de Lucava.
Judge, we worked on asphalt, we worked on block form, and now with this rain and damage, Diamond H, and some of those streets in Curazo Hill. So we're trying to get some loads of asphalt. And I hope for, right now they're doing text ops first. And as soon as we get some, I'll be asking the help of Commissioner Precinct 3 for the oil, so we can use those streets and repair the streets in Curazo Hill and H. And that will be $1 dollar, and I will be motivated by $1,000.
Questions of Commissioner Lucava? There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh huh.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lucava, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.18 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Install Speedlums on Bradshaw Road, Precinct 1.
Judge, we, with the sand mine and other equipment that, or companies that have become active on 186, due to the construction on 186, text ops endured. Some of these trucks are diverting and going around through Bradshaw Road to cut across. And this increased the traffic. Some people have called and concerned, especially still that mobile park that they have there, there's no fencing. So they requested we could install the vehicles or the precinct, install speedlums. The last place we took this type of action was Egg Road. And we saw a significant difference in people driving, storming into the hood and driving out as well.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Lucava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.19 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for Reimbursement for Jacob Rodriguez for attending the pump and motor maintenance course on August 26, 29 in Conroe.
Judge, this course that Mr. Rodriguez attended is a course that was the last minute call that there was an opening. So he took advantage of the position to take this course, which he needed for his credits and the reason in the way. He said he had to pay it out of his pocket, he's requesting reimbursement.
So what is the total that he's asking for reimbursement?
It is $115.43, $115.03.
But there's also an additional hotel for $339. So my question, the request you're asking is for $115.43. However, I noticed he also added a receipt for hotel.
Yeah, because he paid for everything. So you would add both of those sums together, is my understanding.
$3454.76.
Isn't it $60 a day? So that's $85,000. What is that, Commissioner Alonso?
I was telling him that what he asked for reimbursement is just $115, that he didn't add the hotel to the reimbursement.
Yes, that's what I just said, he didn't include the 33.
That's what I was explaining to the commissioner.
He's asking for reimbursement for a motel, Commissioner Odena. He didn't put it on the reimbursement sheet, but I suppose that's what he's asking for as well.
Yeah, that's why he sent in a copy of it. Who paid for the hotel? He did.
He paid for everything and he's asking to be reimbursed in total, Commissioner Juan. So it should be $429.33.
Safety discussion I had earlier, I mean, with commissioners or even who had that, where's the, where do we stop it? Well, as I stated earlier, Commissioner, this was the last minute call that he received, where the opening became available. So based on the schedule, he was kinda forced to take this class at that time. But what I'm saying is, you can notice this a long time before even the deal is done. I get a notice about two months before the DEXO seminar, whatever it's done. Usually you get them for seminars, this was, this was for a, for a class. So they were full initially when he tried to register. They were full, so he was gonna have to wait till the following course was available. And then Vanessa received a call a week before that there was one cancellation. Since he was next in line, he was able to take it. That's what I was explaining. Judge, and, well, you all are gonna be here in the future. I would suggest they get registered anyway, because if there's an opening that they can get, then we'll eliminate all these problems of reimbursement.
So the total amount should be, reflect $429.33, Commissioner Odena?
$429.
And 33 cents. Is what the request should be. Other question, other questions?
So you take it and get the correct information, because if we are, who is gonna be for $105 that he's requesting?
What's, what information, the information is here?
Correct, but who's requesting $105, correct?
$115.
He's requesting $115, which is, which is the meals.
Well, that's what I understand, but that's why you should have, that's why they should put that whole total amount for first time, for which are you gonna who?
It's for both, he's requesting both the meals and the hotel. It's right here, and a receipt for the hotel.
You keep saying it's $115.
It's $115 for the meals. And then he has the receipt for the hotel, $339.33.
How much is the request for here on the?
He's requesting.
For the, yeah.
115.
115?
115.43.
Okay, that's, that's the only thing I'm trying to say. He's asking for 150, and the commissioners, we, the commissioners are trying to give him $419 for all this requesting is 150.
We're not trying to give him more, we're trying to give what is here. It says here, the total reimbursement for hotel.
But he's requesting 150. That's why you're requesting on the Jedi.
No, I know what he's saying. He's saying that because it has that on the agenda, then we should go with what's on the agenda and that.
You all can vote, I'm just gonna vote, like I said, I'm not, you know how I'm gonna vote, so you all can make the motion. Reimbursement this now, and then you have an overall reimbursement in the next court. Yes. It's up to y'all, I'm gonna vote.
Okay, so if there are just one more, and I think it says there, a dollar amount of the 115 plus the hotel reimbursement, the hotel reimbursement, hotel receipt is there, attached in the bottom, La Quinta Inn, with the dollar amount.
Judge, I'll make a motion to reimburse him with clarification of adding the hotel bill on there for the attendance, uh, wording to be added on there. So there will be, there will be that much confusion.
Come, Mr. Garcia, to make it easier, the motion on the table stands that the amount to be reimbursed would be $429.33 to include travel, training, and meal. Thank you. And that motion's by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
You have a second, by Commissioner de Lucava. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have one opposition by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Motion carries. 3.20 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for Professional Services Agreement With HAVD Associates to Assist County in Preparing Bid Documents, Advertisement and Bid and Construction Administration of the Steakhouse Road Improvement Project 3.
Good morning, Judge. My name is Dan Hale with the firm Hale &amp; Associates, thank you for the opportunity to be here. This project, I talked to Commissioner about it, Commissioner Juan. It's over in Brendan Garry, it's improved about a mile of roadway. It's known as the Steakhouse Road in Brendan Garry. Terminates at a dead end and a ranch, the existing gate area. The road's about 18 feet wide, there are several driveways on it. Our plan is to basically reconstruct the road using some reclamation techniques.
Mr. Hale, is that the funding to improve this road, is that coming out of a grant? Or is that coming out of the general fund from Dimon County?
My understanding is, is that it's coming out in allocation of funds that you guys will have, I think, approved with the next, the next cycle.
With your seal, that's your project?
Yes, that's what my understanding is, Judge.
And what's the allocated cost or predicted cost for that?
Yes, we're estimating somewhere in the range of 3.4 million dollars to 800,000 dollars. I've talked to both of the contractors that typically do work here, Judge, which is Jay and Jody out of Crystal City, and Vega Paving, which is out of Vega Park.
How much was that?
3.4 million dollars, about 750,000. The plan that we have developed is to, the existing road has some recycled asphalt paving on it, not much, looks like a couple of inches. And we would incorporate that initially into the existing material. And then, once that's profiled, they would add bases, that's needed, probably four or six inches of base, and do a cement treatment on that, and then add a double course of service treatment. There'd be some transitions at the driveways, because the road would be a little bit higher. The idea was to put a, put a crown on the road.
And how long, how far is this road, how long?
Uh, Judge, it is approximately about one mile, miles and miles, about 52, 53, okay.
And it comes to a dead end?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll evaluate how much right of way we have there, Commissioners, or whether we can put a T dead end or circular, both aside.
In Brendan Garry, sir. Do a lot of people use that road, Commissioner?
I'm sorry?
Do a lot of people use that road, is that a, is that a?
Highly.
Traffic road?
Every now and then, I keep, what do we call it, TF, or what, what do we call?
Seated ones.
Yeah, every now and then, I need to sort of watch, I feel, with that one.
It shows, the nice thing about that road is it actually has on the Google map, if you wanna go take a look at it, you can get a elevated version of that roadway, so you can see the driveways, there's probably a half a dozen or more, Monster Manus, Commissioner, over there. The driveways look like they're pretty much accurate. There's not a whole lot of room between the existing fence lines. But there's, the plan is, is to improve it in its existing condition, which is about 18 feet give or take.
Other questions? I have a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by?
Commissioner Lucava.
Commissioner Lucava. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge, your work.
3.21 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Transfer Road and Bridge Secretary Position from Precinct 3 to Precinct 2.
Judge, no action, takes with.
No action. 3.22 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Coordinate with County Clerks and County Judges' Office to Advertise and Bid on Diamond H Road Improvements, Precinct 4.
Thank you, Judge. This is a section of about 1.2 miles give or take, 1.3 miles of Diamond H. It would begin at the approximate. one-point-three miles of Diamond H, it would begin at the, uh, approximate location of the, um, entryway across the river. Commissioner Valerie and I have talked a lot about this project over the last year or two, is to try to improve and install some culverts along there. The, as we know, Dominance Rancho, a good portion of it is within the special flood hazard area, flood, flood hazard area. And so, we've identified some low points at which we installed some box culverts and put some concrete, so to assist with that area draining. We had talked a little bit about the existing fence line out there, there is a, more of a gang fence set aside from this fence line. Part of this project would be similar to what we did in Commissioner Juan's precinct, which is, the old fence is so dilapidated and grown in with vegetation, when the contractor does clearing of the vegetation in that area, that fence would be removed with it, it's intent practically doing work over there, that fence going. And then we would install, our plan to install T-posts about every one-hundred feet, the property owners wanted that, so that they could know approximately where the old fence line used to be. But this project is estimated at about nine-hundred thousand dollars, Judge. We've tried to tweak the scope to meet the available budget, this is part of, this is...
Is this part of a CO as well?
This is the last project in C.T.I.P. program for Commissioner Rubicaba's precinct. I believe that, uh, Judge, um, the date expires in March or April next year, however, I think Texas has been encouraging a lot of counties that are not as far along, not as far along as we are to spend that money, so.
The last time that we went, we met up with them, we had the meeting, uh, they told us whoever has money, money left over, C.T.I.P.s, to use them as a next year, because they're trying to get more money, and they can't, aspirate until everybody, either the county head finishes the, uh...
So this, this project would be subject to the same rules as the other projects, it's eighty percent grant, twenty percent county.
You said twenty percent county? Questions?
I have a question, Judge.
Yes, sir.
And, oh, for Commissioner, and, well, Mr. Even, that, have you all had any luck in speaking to the landowners and trying to improve the drain within the road, very?
We tried, maybe three years ago, and they, they weren't budging in. But we're gonna try it again this year, the C.T.I.P. can do it, because this funding is, the C.T.I.P. was given to the counties for any roads that have the oil field on them, so that's why we're using it, for its, the, where there's more of the oil field on there.
That's an excellent question, Commissioner, I'm sorry, the Risco has a lake out there, if you window back out, but it's about a mile, mile and a half away from the roadway, so it's required to work on private property. But we were looking at all kinds of ways to try to figure out, we can't keep the area from being inundated, because it's just naturally part of the flood zone area, but if there are ways to try to alleviate storm or water event after it happened, to help move that water out. At the time, they weren't interested in, well, I mean, county to even come in there on a one-time basis, with county attorney's approval and everybody else's approval to, to profile a drainage ditch back towards that lake, but there is a lake that called Lake Risco on the mound, and it would be nice if we could do that, but, um, anyway, there are portions of this road that probably experiencing worse than three to five inundation during storm or, uh, are available to be to get the, uh, road reset another foot or two.
I was gonna say, is there any way that we can raise the road to, to kind of maybe mitigate it, instead of having to continuously try to rectify that?
Yes, Judge, however, to, to really bring down the flood, I think you have to raise that road five feet or more, but what we're gonna try to do is in parts, raise it up to two feet, just where it's financially feasible, because...
Correct, that's...
Yes.
And, and even if you, in situations where you do raise the road, if the water stands on either side, it'll saturate and give out eventually.
Right. This is just an attempt to, uh, improve the road and the conditions, and try to get the flood event mitigated as soon as possible after.
To mitigate, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Judge, this will be the mile of one-point-two, one-point-three mile, we're gonna start where Mr. Juan of this, this road project, towards this way, I will be here.
And with this project, Commissioner, I think you and I evaluated it, I think there's less than three miles left on all of that road, that will have not been improved in some form or fashion, so the county's done an excellent job over the last ten to fifteen years in trying to utilize resources available to us to try to get this, this road improved. Thank you, Judge, thank you for it.
Other questions? I entertain a motion.
Motion, second.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two three, discussion and appropriate action, approved professional service agreement with Haley, Hale Lee, and Associates to assist county in preparing bid documents, advertise, and bid construction administration of the Feres Lane Roadway Improvement Project.
Good morning, Judge, your work. About several times, Mr. Rubicaba on this roadway, we looked at it, probably started a couple of years ago. This is a road adjacent to the school property that they own, it's vacant right now.
That's the one behind the school, please, Commissioner Juan, we're going.
This, this road consists of approximately about a half-mile, give or take. There are a number of residences, and I've come to the small, and it's, it's, there's a lot of drainage that heads down this road, and traverses the road at a couple of locations, there's a couple culverts that probably need to be modified and replaced. So part of this project would be to improve the roadway itself, try to establish some line of bar ditches, but also realizing that when you get to the road, as the Commissioner and I have talked about, where it tees off, a portion of that water heads back towards an existing residence. There's a culvert on the other side where this road intersects and tees, and, uh, we're gonna be cognizant and try and, uh, improve the road without creating any adverse impacts to those properties. So that's the proposed plan of action, so there's a bit of a planning on how to get that way.
And that's out of the CO? The new ones? I'll entertain a motion, if there's no questions?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Four point one, discussion and appropriate action approval to purchase equipment under
This one, Judge, is just a review we use for... I think you use the county with paper, I don't want to see if I get it out of forfeiture from...
For the self-right?
Extract the, uh...
The extraction of the phone, the phone notes, Commissioner Alonso, for investigation Are there any questions? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duol Gava, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Four point two, discussion and appropriate action, sheriff's report.
A citation, Judge, we're go ads on, on occasion, at some point doing board, but I'll also change my traffic around and control it a bit around, so I'll put a, a citation for this coming up.
Questions of the sheriff's report? There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Um... You should have a paper form, you turned, you just turned it in, Commissioner, carrying my, it should be in here. You can have mine, Commissioner Odena.
No, I think, I'm sure, but...
Oh, you got yours, where you going?
He took yours. You have it? I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Four point one, discussion and appropriate action, status report on utility, that report should also be in front of you, in the form of a paper. We are on four point one, it should reflect five point one. Morning, Mr. Hyman, questions on Mr. Hyman's utility and regulatory compliance report?
Just for the Richard, just getting, you'll remove about three inches of material, I would think, when the commission stands and, um, somehow, so, yeah, filter, that's, that's what we designed, we built it up.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner, or Mr. Hyman, on, on that fire hydrant, are we able to get water from it, for, I'm gonna draw, let's say, go to six thousand gallons?
Just for those?
No, on that Brandon's one. The reason why I ask is because we had a fire there the other day, and, above, about a couple of weeks or something like that, so we had, we had to go to the neighboring and get some water.
If you, if you're ever running into that situation, Commissioner, there, we can set it up where, even, uh, how, uh, you can lead a team to that, to that, because it's inside the system, or is it outside?
It's outside, it's, 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 kind of, kind of, kind of, or...
Oh, I see, yeah, no, you, you can, you should, you should, the tanks are, for ten thousand gallons? Yes, we should be able to hook up to it.
Okay.
We might wanna, I'll give Mr. a permit and check it, make sure everything's good on the hydrant.
I don't want to terminate your water or dry, run you dry and...
I don't think you, because it's...
It's just a question I have.
It's got a, a check valve, it's got a system of a check valve, so it, that it won't return water into the system.
Or if somebody's water, which, which, what is it, it's up.
Sir, I'm there, yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm in this, I'm also subdivision, I got a call, I think Mr. Gonzalez, the comp, 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 so let me know, they built a fence, and this ran against the fire hydrant, so you might wanna check those, and it's real low, so, I think you need to go, use a riser, or, or move it a little bit further from the fence, but there's no way they're gonna be able to connect to, to the fire hydrant. And Carusoville right there by Martin, and, uh, we have the stockpile?
Mm-hmm.
Not, 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 on the right-hand side? It's on the right-hand side, right? All the bulbs keep, again, and everything, so, it's there in, uh, that's, but also...
As for the time right now, I haven't looked at it, not a finding to Gonzalez, and, uh, what we, what we told a gentleman in our emergency for right now, while he comes back, uh, we're gonna cut the fence, and make it up, and we have to remove that pipe, that's right across it on the back part, we'll not, we'll cut it off also. This is just from here, till he gets back, and they decide what they're gonna do, uh, that's when I submit it to report. He is aware, yeah.
That's on the right-hand side, you remove to the stockpile, right?
It's a new fence, and he said, do whatever, do whatever we need to do.
Any other questions on Mr. Hyman?
Also, Judge, I know that, uh, border patrol, it's ours, but there's some fire hydrants that are not working, also, and you, you can just gonna take care of them, or we take care of it, I don't mind either way.
At the border patrol station?
Uh, as long as we know patrol, we're not looking for any, uh, I can, uh, what I did on the one at the border, when I had the city come in and assist, or, or I took up a agreement to test, pressure test, that worked with that new project, so I could, I would, the same, perform the same test on...
The border patrol station? Can you just let them know which one's there?
They knocked it down, so I know where it was, um, I don't know where it was. They knocked it, where, where, where? The border patrol station. They, they knocked it down? Yeah. They hit it with a bumper, and I told Mr. Pereira, but he said that he was gonna look into it. Is it ours, our responsibility to fix it, or is it negligence on their part? Come again? And the fire hydrant, I told you. Oh, yeah, well, that would, that would be their responsibility to fix it, and, and if we do it, we have to build them to do it, I mean, to build, send them to build. How long ago did this happen? No, we can take care of it, but I didn't wanna follow the proper protocol, because, so they hit the fire hydrant, how long ago did this happen? Recent, this, last week? One of the agents, agents was backing up and knocked it down.
When did it happen? That's what he's asking.
Last week?
He's asking, when did it happen?
Some time ago, about, uh, two months ago. We'll, we'll, we'll look into it, Commissioner, uh, because it's important that we have that fire hydrant active there, case we were needed. I understand, but when I asked it, they were gonna take into it, and, and, now that I know that we got it fixed, we'll fix it. I just thought that the agent knocked it down, so it'd be their responsibility, they pay for it, they should, they should. Right, but that's what I'm saying, if, if we fix it, we need to build them, or they, they need to fix it, they take care of it, or we fix it and build them. Sure. We'll fix it, you can... They end up paying for it anyway, it should be. We'll look into it, Commissioner, we'll talk to them, and figure out what we need to do.
Any other comments? I need a motion to approve the status report for utility department. Motion by Commissioner Duol Gava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Hyman. Six point one, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from county treasurer, Mr. Oscar Ortiz, for the month of July and August 2024, I'm gonna table that, Mr. Ortiz is out. Second by Commissioner Duol Gava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action approval to pay down comp time balance to twenty hours for two employees and county treasurer's office from remaining department budget. Um, I'm gonna file, I'm gonna motion to table, Mr. Ortiz is not here, and I'm not too sure exactly what he's, his discussion is, or if you guys have questions for him.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Duol Gava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Six point three, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from county auditor, Mr. Carlos Pereira, for the month of August 2024.
This is a report for August, and as of the end of August, we have collected, under current taxes, fourteen million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and six, that is four hundred and four thousand over our projected revenues for the current taxes. So in total, we have twenty-three million, one hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars in revenues. If you return to page two, under year-to-date expenses, we have sixty million, two hundred ninety-one, six hundred and thirty, as of the end of August. If you return to page 2, under year-to-date expenses, we have 60,291,630 dollars at the end of August, which leaves us 6,820,239 dollars revenues over expenditures for the general.
Can you send that on my, on my calculator?
Questions on Mr. Pereira?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noguama. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.4 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Open Bids for Ambulance Services. Thank you. We have two bids. We have one that was submitted, and one that was submitted after the deadline, you said? Bless you. So I'm not gonna open that one then. So we have one that was timely submitted. We have one bid that was submitted timely. We have another bid that was submitted on Friday, which is a day after the deadline, correct? And we have the, one that was submitted timely is for Victory Ambulance Service, Victory, Victory Ambulance Care LLC. And the proposed bid is for $900,000 per year. There will be no action taken on 6.4. That was just so that we could open the bids. On 6.5 Discussion and Appropriate Action: To Award or Reject Ambulance Services Bids, and if rejected, to authorize for re-advertising. I will state this on the record. Commissioner Juan Carmona, myself, and Sheriff Castaneda did attend the city council meeting that was conducted last week. They approved their budget for, as you are, you all are aware that the city of Carrizo Springs does contribute a certain amount to Dimmitt County for purposes of emergency medical service, ambulatory services. As you guys were aware, last year, they had only approved to give $144,000. As you guys are aware, when I came into office and looking at all the contracts, the auditor, myself, and our attorney found out that at some point prior to my administration, there was some kind of miscommunication in how the contract was approved for Dimmitt County, to where initially the thought process was that it was gonna be $300,000 for those services. At some point, in the contract, it increased to $600,000. And at that point, the city of Carrizo Springs had approved their budget to only give Dimmitt County $144,000, which left Dimmitt County in the hole that additional 100 and $156,000 that Dimmitt County had to eat up that cost of 156,000 for the year. In going to the meeting last week, like I said, Mr. Juan Carmona, myself, and the sheriff, the council did advise us that their, and I know that Councilman Galvano is here, and City Manager Ms. Asada Garcia are here. My distinct understanding was that they were going to approve their budget to remain to only give Dimmitt County $144,000. I did advise them, Commissioner Juan did advise them. We have had extensive conversations and meetings with them because they also have the law enforcement. And we did advise them that there was a high probability that the bids were not gonna come in at 300,000, which is what they had initially had prior to my administration, and that's the reason why they had budgeted for 144,000, which was somewhat half of the 300,000. The county of Dimmitt would provide the other half. In speaking to Mr. Olivares, and I know it's a question that Commissioner Juan and, or Commissioner Odena asked earlier, what the percentage of the calls are within the city of Carrizo, which are about 89% or so, 89% of the calls are from the city of Carrizo Springs. In having conversations with the mayor and with their, their financial advisor and the city manager, I've advised them that the calls that are county calls are limited to probably 10% or less. However, nonetheless, the county is still paying for 75% of the emergency medical service bill fee. With that being said, as you all are aware, the bid for this next year is $900,000, which is $300,000 more than what we're currently paying at 600,000. With that being said, I don't know if any of the representatives from the city of Carrizo would like to come forward to confirm or deny that it was approved at only 144,000. When we went last week to meet with the council, they did advise Sheriff Castaneda and Commissioner Juan and myself that more likely than not, their budget would only allow at, maybe, if they didn't have to get approved, maybe in giving Dimmitt County 200,000. It was at that point that Commissioner Juan Carmona recommended to city council that perhaps the city build their own emergency medical services, if the county was gonna have to eat up all the costs. Can you confirm or deny, Ms. Garcia?
Sure. So in the meeting, because we had approved our budget, we just put in the same amounts from last year. You did advise us that you had budgeted for 400,000, so we knew that if your goal was for 50/50, we had come up with 200,000. So the council would then, should they choose to do that, would have to amend the budget. But for the purposes of approving the budget moving forward, we use the same costs as last year. It's up to the council in the future, depending on what your decision is today, to then meet again and then see if an amendment has to get done and see if there's a possibility of coming up with the, the half. If that's a, that's something we can work with. Of course, we, our budget's so tight, but whatever we have to work on. So final decisions are made. That amount was done there so we could approve our budget. We had to put some amount in there. We just used the numbers from last year since your bid opening was until today. So once you make your decision today, then they would have the reconvene and then make a determination on how they would move forward. So that was the summarization basically of the meeting. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Questions?
I've just got a, one question. If out of the 900,000, it's 4,500 for the...
450,000.
450,000 for the city, 450,000 for the county. So if we approve or disapprove, whatever, we're gonna do without an ambulance service until we decide what we're gonna do. So my suggestion would be to call a joint meeting so we can decide what that process is gonna be.
Well, I can tell you this much in terms of the conversations that we've had with the city of Carrizo, and again, Councilman Galvano is here and City Manager. The last time that we met with them, Sheriff Castaneda, Commissioner Odena was there. Their financial advisor clearly told us that, at that time, we had asked the city for about 400,000, 450,000 as their part, and it was at that time, what's the gentleman's name, Ms. Garcia, your financial?
El Galco Castillo.
Mr. Castillo, right, he's the one that was there. He advised us at that time that the city, more likely than not, was not gonna give us 450,000 or 400,000.
But the problem is that we all took it together and decided as a group, not just, basically they told us. Some of them wouldn't say no.
Commissioner, you were at the city council meeting last week, and you already know what their sentiments are. There's no point of sugarcoating it. It is what it is. They're not gonna give us 400,000.
I'm not sugarcoating it. I'm just, I'm just wanting to be aware that if there's, they don't pay their part, the ambulance service doesn't have to provide services for them. It's absolute. See, there's a lot of things that people don't know, so they need to be aware of whatever the problems are.
Most definitely.
What's gonna arise. The first thing they're gonna do, well, it was the county. It was the county that didn't wanna help us.
Well, I wanna make it very clear, Commissioner Juan, and there is a section, and I will give that to you right now so that you can also follow up. And I'll have our legal counsel here at the next meeting. Let me give that to you so that you can have it.
Well, I, I heard it when you told them that they shall provide, give a deal. That's what I wanted to know.
So, so just, it's on the, it's in the government code. So just for purposes of clarification, so the public knows, is that emergency medical services shall be provided by the county. However, we, we only have to provide them if there is a contract between the requesting agency or requesting governmental agency, which in this case would be the city of Carrizo, or the city of Asherton, or the city of Bigwolves. Only if there is a contract in place and an agreed contract. If there is no contract between the city and this, this county for emergency medical services, we're not legally bonded to provide emergency medical services for the, within the city of Carrizo, essentially. It would be just for the county. Again, of course, I think that would have to be a conversation that would have to take place, again, ad nauseam, because if that's the case, then we would have to go back, and when we do the advertisement, the advertisement would differentiate because it's gonna change the amount of, of the services that we're requesting. And therefore, would, would, I would hope and think it would reflect a lower number in the bid. Because now we're not asking for bids within the city, to provide services within the city of Carrizo. And as you are well aware, when we were at the city council meeting, I, I personally, I personally do not want to not have a contract with the city of Carrizo. I think it's important that we work collectively together to be able to provide a service to our constituents. But at the same time, we as a commissioners' court, me as a chief budgeting officer, have to look at what the financial stability is of Dimmitt County, and how that's gonna affect, and can Dimmitt County afford to pay $900,000 for emergency medical services? Is that within our budget? As you guys are aware, we approved the budget at 400,000. Not 900,000. So at this juncture, I'm gonna, I guess, entertain a motion to either award, reject, or table this item. Or go into executive session.
I'm gonna motion to table, Judge. Based on the fact that we only budgeted 400,000, this exceeds the amount that we would have to cover at this point.
Are you asking to table it, and we also reject the bid, or reject and open it up for bids? I know that there was another bid that came in as well, but that was, came in after.
My motion is to table and reject based on the actual fact that we don't have the money allocated to cover the contract. We would, if we were to enter into a contract, then we really cannot cover at this point.
Mr. Pereira, his motion is to reject it. Is that also to re-advertise?
It's on the agenda, so you...
You have it, you have, you, you wrote on the agenda to reject and re-advertise.
And if not, no, to accept or reject.
I know, but he rejected, his motion's to reject it. Commissioner Odena's motion's to reject it, so it's to re-advertise, to open it back up.
Right.
Do you want to re-advertise?
Right, and then that's why we can discuss our options, and perhaps like you just stated earlier, we might end up with a different, we should end up with a different amount.
So that would be...
To reject and re-advertise.
Exactly, re-advertise, so we can advertise this week.
I have a motion by Commissioner Odena. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noguama. All in favor?
Aye.
Give me one second.
For the record, Mr. Garcia would not be, although I said, at the same time, was the judge, myself, and the sheriff.
There was no walking quorum.
Right.
For the record. There was two.
For the record, in case, in case...
For the record, Mr. Garcia, there was no walking quorum. It was two members of the court, which is myself and Commissioner Juan, at that meeting. Sheriff Castaneda was there as well, as a representative of the county for the part that requires Dimmitt County's contract for law enforcement, because we also provide law enforcement to the city of Carrizo. And just for the record, for the purposes of our constituents and our residents, Sheriff Castaneda does not constitute a member of the court, and therefore Sheriff Castaneda does not, is not considered as a walking quorum. Thank you, Commissioner Juan. Any other discussion?
May I, ma'am? Just wanted to let you know that on what says yearly expenditures on our bid, the numbers weren't correct. They copied and pasted the wrong way. The numbers are actually higher, but since we're gonna go ahead and rebid, just to let you know that the corrected sheet will be placed in, will be placed on there, just, just for, for the record. Yeah. The word says yearly expenditures, those numbers are actually lower than what it's actually supposed to be.
For the payroll and supply?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the, the numbers are actually higher, yeah.
They're actually higher?
Yeah. Yeah. So when we're gonna rebid, the corrected sheet...
So I suppose that the bid would have been higher?
Ma'am, no, the bid was gonna stay the same. The bid, the bid was the same, but... The bid was the same, but just... We usually show like the yearly expenditure on the proposal.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So...
Thank you.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion.
Re-advertise is just for the county itself or... Because maybe the motion didn't state how we... Or we're advertising the same way.
So...
So, you reject because the city... We don't know what the city was gonna do.
So, what we're gonna do, Commissioner, is that when we are... The motion's to reject and re-advertise for ambulance services. But for the part of the discussion, Commissioner Odena, I suppose I'm purely speculating, is that we shall have a special meeting to include the city of Carrizo because they'd have to post too because they're gonna have a quorum to come meet with us. We have to post. They have to post to meet the Open Meetings, Public Meetings Act. So, we would have to have... Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask a question?
Come... We can please come forward?
Sure.
Can I ask after?
Wouldn't it be possible when you re-advertise to ask for two items? One to include the city and county, and then one just county so you can already have both amounts?
We can definitely do that, and I think that's what Commissioner Juan was alluding to. Is that when we ask for the bids, for the bids to...
By the way, you can make a decision. We know what the amount will be, if it's combined or not, and we would know or we could support that with our budget, but then you'd have separated costs if it's just gonna be...
No, I think that the viable thing to say is that we put in the advertisement, Mr. Pereira, on the bids to request for essentially two different bids. One bid to include how it's now where we service, yes, service the city of Carrizo Springs and city of Asherton, and city of Big Wolves. But furthermore, that there be a separate bid to include all these services outside of the city lines, outside of... It'd be just for county.
I was just asking, sometimes you have to do that. Would you option one or two as an alternate just to... Okay. Thank you.
So... Ma'am?
Yes, if you can come forward, Mr. Juan.
Yes, ma'am. So, my question is, is this meeting gonna be held before the 31st? And are the bids gonna be submitted before the 31st? Because come October 1st, our contract ends, correct?
Correct.
So, we need to submit these bids before the 31st and will be known before the 31st?
No.
Okay.
So, are we gonna get a letter that we're not responsible for I-1 services after the 31st? Because I'm not gonna be accountable for any services without a contract.
I mean, technically, we could... And obviously, as Ms. Perez is the owner of the company. But I think it's a discussion that we could have on possibly going on a month-to-month basis right now with Victory. If that's something, that's something, a possibility. Until then, we can get either a contract awarded or not. Because I don't think that we won't have a special meeting then to approve awards and whatnot because we gotta do the two weeks' advertisement. Plus, I need to get with the city of Carrizo Springs to see when they can have a special meeting with the Commissioners' Court. Because like I said, we still have to post, and we have to give 72-hour notice. They have to post and give 72-hour notice because they'll have a walking... They'll have a quorum. We have a quorum to meet here. So...
So, you'll get with me so I can get with our CEOs?
Correct.
And make sure that we have a meeting before the 31st. And then, I have one more question on this explanation of the bids. So, we're gonna bid for the county and the city?
So, the bid, the advertisement's gonna reflect, Mr. Pereira will do the proper terminology on there, but to reflect, one, requesting a bid to include the way it is now, which is the services that are provided to the entire county to include city of Carrizo, Big Wolves, Asherton, Catarina. And then, another bid that's just gonna reflect the services if you were just to provide it to the county, meaning not the city of Carrizo. So, you'd only be called out for residents that are outside of the city limits. You understand what I'm saying? So, instead of you... Like, if you were to get a call within the city of Carrizo for our contract, the amount of money we pay, you guys would not include the city of Carrizo. So, in that sense, it'd be a contract with the city of Carrizo that you guys would have. Our contract would only include to service the constituents outside of the...
And just for the record, like with when we bid, yes, you're guaranteed one items, guaranteed. But technically have, you know, two to three.
And I explained that to the City Council, remember, Commissioner? I explained that to the City Council last week.
So, that would mean like if there's... If we go to that, to the call in the county, you know, to where... There'll only be one ambulance for the entire county, which means that if there's a call in Catarina, you're not gonna be guaranteed those other two as backup anymore than we used to have. So, just so that they know, and the city also, just an explanation.
They're on...
Right.
They already know. I already told them that.
Just so that everybody's aware.
You only have one ambulance.
Correct.
But that, you'll discuss that with the budget. I mean, we all...
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah. I just wanted to make it, you know, clear. Yeah. Yeah. How it works with us. I can't speak for any other service, but how it works with us.
They're aware of it. We explain it to them, and we're aware of it, so...
Right. 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 It's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Thanks.
Sorry for interrupting you.
No, it's okay. You know, I just wanted to make sure, you know, because like we're locals, we, you know, we help, but I can't speak for anybody else. Yes.
6.6, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 93 for JP Precinct 3. Question?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. Is there a second?
Aye.
It's okay.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, my dear.
I'm sorry, you're interrupting, but if everything's okay, then we can... I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem, but I just go one at a time. So, if you guys have questions, like Commissioner De Volcava looking at me like she wants to go one at a time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.7, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 99 Utility Department. Motion by Commissioner De Volcava.
Second. Second.
I heard you, Commissioner. Give me one second. Motion by Commissioner De Volcava, second by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.8, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 100 Precinct 1 Road and Bridge 1.
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.9, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 101 Golf Course.
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.10, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 104 for Road and Bridge Number 4.
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.11, Budget Adjustment Number 105 for Metro.
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
6.12, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 106 for Sanitation.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.13, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 107 Judges Office. Motion by Commissioner De Volcava. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Budget Number 6.16, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 110 Tax Office. Do you have that one, Ms. Mariado or Mr. Pereira? Ah, it's on the... No, is it?
It's on the...
The addendum was for something else.
It was something else.
I'm gonna recommend that we approve it. Do I have a motion?
Uh-huh.
Motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner De Volcava. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.17, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 112 from the Sheriff's Department.
Some move?
Do I have that, Mr. Pereira?
You should.
I don't have it here. Oh, it's the next one? Oh. I see. I got it. It's in the next page. They're asking for a budget adjustment to cover telephone, training, fuel and oil, lease agreement, uniforms, and repair of a vehicle. Motion by Commissioner De Volcava, second by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.18, Budget Adjustment Number 115 for the 293rd District Court to contract from IT to professional services. Motion by Commissioner De Volcava. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Budget Adjustment Number 116 for the 365th from professional services to professional services in the amount of 15,000.
That was a request of 30,000.
Huh?
That was a request. It was up to 30,000. We had originally put in the 30,000, and so looking at it...
No, you put for 15,000.
I know. Originally, we put it in. We looked at it. We thought it was gonna be too much for Calda. We said, we still have a bunch of letters, still plenty, so I was probably requesting to bring it back up to 30. Is those one of the cases that he's gotten, 15,000?
Questions? He requested 15, but now he's requesting 30. I'm gonna recommend to keep it at 15,000. Do I have a motion?
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have one opposition by Commissioner Juan.
He's requesting 30.
He requested 15, but then he commissioned... He called and he said 30. And now, Commissioner... Mr. Pereira's saying, well, if he uses it, he uses it. If not, then it stays there. And that doesn't seem pressing to me. That's why I'm recommending 15.
Because it's not here with the budget adjustment.
I know. That's why I'm saying. 6.20, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 117 for Road and Bridge Precinct 2. Motion by Commissioner De Volcava. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.21, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 118 from the courthouse. Motion by Commissioner De Volcava. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.22, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 119 for the Fire Department. Motion by Commissioner De Volcava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.23, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 120 for Road and Bridge Number 3. That's what I was gonna ask. No, it's Commissioner... That's Commissioner Juan.
Sorry?
He's asking about the part-time. You're asking for $20,000 for part-time. You signed it.
Well, that's to cover the... What would we know, or our time?
Do I have a motion?
Some move? Some move?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? 6.24, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 123 Agency Services. What is that for, Mr. Pereira?
This is for the ambulance service.
Because I didn't sign it.
Well, I know you have accepted, but we still need to pay. That's gonna be the amount this year. The current year, and we have a budget, so we're gonna end up paying for it. That's why we're putting it into that EMS...
Because remember that we were in... Well, because initially, back in 2021, y'all budgeted to pay 300,000. And then, when the contract came, y'all had approved 600,000.
And that's where it's gonna come in. Well, I mean, it's a solid, but this has...
Questions?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.25, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Number 124 General Administration.
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner De Volcava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.26, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment 125 Courthouse Security. Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena. First, motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.27, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 127 Constable Precinct 3. Motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner De Volcava. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.28, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number 130 Treasures Department. Motion by Commissioner De Volcava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Can I make a comment? One thing that the... He had that item on 20 hours. And what he wanted to do is pay down his two assistance down to 20 hours because they're close to the 40 hours or the... Contact. So, that's why he was requesting. That's what this suggestion was. And his request was... That's what his request was.
May I... May I just... Mr. Pereira, in the future, whenever these documents get scanned as far as budget, can you make sure that they're signed by the trustee?
Yes, I would agree with you.
Yeah, normally, we do that. Because we were trying to get this before the last meeting. But that's where I was talking about this adjustment was...
I thought he went...
It's the public facilities.
Didn't, did you got?
The denim I got.
I'm gonna go back to personnel policy 3.24, Discussion and Appropriate Action on the Addendum. Resolution for fiscal year '24, '25 tax rate adoption. This is just a resolution that I need to sign. In speaking to Ms. Sandoval, the tax assessor, this was something that was done many years ago, and kind of stopped, it was, it had stopped being done, and just out of abundance of caution, we're gonna go ahead and do it again. In the past, it was done in a different formality that would still suffice. This time around, Ms. Sandoval just wants to do it in the form of a resolution, as other local governmental agencies do it, so that she can have a uniform resolution across the board for every entity that's a tax-collecting entity. So I entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.29, Claim Docket. In the general fund, we have $1,113,795.12. Dimon County Grants, $500. Dimon County Clerk, $1,162.70. Dimon County District Clerk, $8,842.93. Dimon County Airport, $4,059.14. Dimon County Golf Course, $26,053.17. Law Library Fund, $183. Courthouse Security, $3,814.42. Records Management Clerk, County Clerk, $2,497. Utilities, $121,843.19. Rodeo Arena, $477.08. Stone Garden, $68,059.99. Operation Lone Star 2022, $8,668.44. Dimon County Payroll, $326,521.53. Forage Grant Total, $1,686,477.71.
Some move? You have a second?
Give me one second, Commissioner. Are there any questions? Have a motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. At this time, item number seven, Executive Session, we do have a request on the table. So at this time, the time is 12:15, and we will be entering into Executive Session. The time now is 12:37, Mr. Garcia, there was no action taken in Executive Session. The court's gonna- Go to 6.14, Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Number 108 for the landfill.
To move from contract services to capital equipment, $26.50.
To move, to move contract services to capital equipment for $26.50. Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.15, Budget Adjustment Number 109 for County Clerk's Office.
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I entertain a motion to reassess and adjourn the regular meeting.
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The time now is 12:38, Mr. Garcia, and I want to call a meeting to order for the public facilities. We'll call if the record is like that, all parties are still present from regular meetings, no absences. 1.3, Approval of Minutes of September 3rd, 2024, and September 9th, 2024.
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1, Discussion and Appropriate Action New Business.
Judge, to repair the parking lot, can we put it in the agenda, or for the record?
Any other new business?
No ma'am.
No action? 3.1, Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report?
Through the end of August, we have $1.2 million in revenues, and we have spent through the end of August, $267,000.
Questions on Mr. Pereira? I entertain a motion to approve Mr. Pereira's monthly report?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner, I mean Commissioner Odena?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.2, Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Number 121 Public Facilities.
Some move?
Yes, if you're asking for maintenance and repair, capital equipment, if we move to maintenance and repair of a building.
Then proceed, proceed. Mid, middle real estate?
Is that for middle real estate building?
Yes ma'am.
Yes.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.3, Claim Docket, $9,965.60 for public safety, is there any questions? I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, second by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I entertain a motion to reassess and adjourn the regular meet of the public facilities.
Some move?
Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any further discussion?
All in favor? Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, this man has any thoughts?